Today's case second, two thousand eleven, time seven P. M. in the regular meeting of Greensburg Council is called to order. At this time, when you have the question on cell phones, pagers, and any other electronic devices, be silent, please. Real call, please do.
Jamie?
Here.
Daryl?
Here.
Herb?
Here.
Dale?
Here.
Are there any amendments or amendments to the minutes that you received?
Hearing now, mayor take a motion to approve minutes as delivered.
No.
Question, second. Real call, please do.
Jamie?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Thank you. Gary?
Thank you. I'm here to give you an update on the status of Lincoln Street. Last week, we opened Lincoln Street north off again so you can get through, so you don't have to do the detour. But First Street is closed. It should be closed for approximately the next thirty days. We'll have Fourth Street closed and Four on Court closed over that same thirty day period. And we'll be removing the west side of Lincoln between First and Fifth also during that time. So hopefully by June first, we'll switch everybody over to bring new lanes on the west side, and then they'll start tearing out the whole west half. The reason, or east half from the hospital all the way up to Fifth Street. The reason they're doing that is so they don't be affecting school bus traffic in the long time after school closes for that. And the goal right now is to have everything done curb to curb from the south in the hospital all the way to bypass by July. We'll be running on the two westernmost lanes, as we'll use that third eastern lane for staging to finish up concrete work on driveways and sidewalks. And so after that, we'll be working on getting it, the surface done from one end to the other at the same time. So it'll look like a finished product. Some of the landscaping will need to wait till October when things go dormant and get that in. Our main push is getting rid of it.
June first, curb to curb. You have two ways to curb.
July first.
July first.
Yes.
Is there anything we can do with puddles on intersection First and Lincoln? That's getting pretty bad with people going through there back and forth.
We would have them working at least twice a day once in the morning, but that's closed now.
Well done.
That's been closed, but when it was bad, we did have them dressing that up in the morning before they left in the evening. With the rain, it would get rid of us really bad in the morning.
This doesn't have anything to do with Lincoln Street, but I noticed a lot of people taking Tenth up and around the bypass and taking Broadway across. And that, there's a huge circle there at the corner where you turn onto the bypass that's actually going north off of Broadway. Turn off Tenth Street on Broadway. Right there at the turn, it's about thirty yards, twenty, thirty yards.
I have this one, this one instead of the other, because this passport page change is going.
I believe so.
It's in State Department.
Oh, is it?
They're aware of it.
Any questions on Lincoln Street?
Sure. On the Broadway project that we brought forth mid last year, we've entered into a contract with John Aman Excavating. One thing that was overlooked by the designers was the roof drainage off the buildings. And so they had submitted a change order for five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. The Board of Works accepted this change order in the previous meeting earlier tonight to amend the contract. The mayor had all the money that for this project is coming out in added funds, and we just wanted you to be aware, or I don't know if it was a vote, this change order was going to be coming out in added funds.
Has this been practiced for the council to approve added monies? Only to, you know, pay managers?
So we originally had a change order for sixty nine hundred dollars. If you thought that was too high, it was worked with and renegotiated and it's down to five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Can you might touch on what was overlooked?
Well, if you saw any of the grates that were on the sidewalk, the designer was not sure that those were even falling or working. So he kind of amended, putting them in the project. Once he found out that they were active, we wanted to make sure we perpetuated that drainage, because even if they weren't working and they cleaned something and then we didn't perpetuate it and cause a problem, we would have been liable for it. I don't care if they're working or not, we're perpetuating them out and tying them in these storms.
Now, each individual store will have that vulnerability?
Whatever downspouts are out there now, I believe there's seven points where roof drains come down on the sidewalk. And we didn't want to just stick those in the curb and have them drain out into the street, because that turns into a freezing issue with the ice. So we wanted to make sure it was all tied in.
So it will either be replaced or approved?
Yes.
Curb.
And we didn't want those drains or those grates going across the new paved sidewalks. So that's why we took them out of the sidewalk.
It's a lot better design because than recently, we've had to pay for air plances for it because it may trip over. So we can just move the surface until it's safer as well. So what I'm asking is for approval from the council to accept this change order. It's not going to be paid for out of added funds.
No.
Seven.
Any discussion? Real call, please do.
Jamie?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item on business is historic preservation orders two thousand eleven dash three for the third reading. Drew Barth, taking this place.
Yes.
Brian, how do you see Drew Barth?
I was wondering if I might be able to just read something over the app of the commission?
Sure.
Real quick, three, four minutes. Downtown revitalization, particularly historic preservation, is never easy. It deals with passions, be they thoughts on aesthetics, history, or even ideology of government. The Historic Preservation Commission realized this long ago and respected the process in designing the district. They've taken four years, conducted forty public commission meetings, and personally invited the property owners to seven additional special public meetings. They've worked to create guidelines that fit our community, guidelines that offer protection and coordination, but are not so restrictive that they would dissuade investment or development. There is no added cost for the certificate of approval, and the guidelines offer a three-tiered process of appeals to temper any threat of fanaticism on either side. This has been a conscious effort, not simply one of courtesy. It's a step forward in our city's development and something that has been suggested since the nineteen seventies, not a side project of some one-time busybodies. The community once again requested our downtown be protected in the two thousand and seven concrete plan, and the commission is acting accordingly. The district is not a commentary on the present building owners. Many take great pride in their building, have led successful businesses in the downtown, and support the growth being experienced and planned for the downtown. They've made investments in the old buildings, investments that the ordinance aims to protect by holding everyone to the same standards and processes. In many cases, if they could promise that they will forever own the building and the same care they provided will be provided by the future owner, we wouldn't need a preservation district. But nobody can guarantee that, and thus we do need such insurance. The downtown is special, and currently holds a number of direct financial incentives to those that own and invest in the district, programs not previously available. This district can add to those incentives while protecting the investments made by the private sectors and the community. As with any ordinance, resolution, or government action, there are hypotheticals, and rightly there should be. All things should be considered when making the decisions, and everything should be respected when placed in a logical context. The commission feels they've addressed as many of such issues as possible in the process of developing the guidelines. The guidelines only apply to changes to commercial buildings, they do not affect interiors, there is no total reconstruction requirement within the guidelines, new construction with new design is encouraged, various new materials are allowed, building safety ordinance take complete precedence, and as stated before, the guidelines offers a series of appeal possibilities should complications arise. But even though these efforts and others, well, beginning through these efforts and others, fears still remain, and as they are not officially accepted at this point, the commission continues to invite those worried about the unknown to take part in the process of assembling the guidelines so as to make them more comprehensive. This has been a complicated and passionate issue, but most important issues are. Greensburg is and has been preparing for development, and like any business, family, or individual having something, be it a sign, a picture, et cetera, in tow during a big change, so as to preserve and remind them who they are and where they've been, we believe the community sees the downtown district as serving the same purpose. They have stated as much in a comprehensive plan. To many, losing that grounding, that ground is to chip away at our identity, and unfortunately, once each piece is gone, it's gone. So we do suggest that the historical district be established tonight. We appreciate your cooperation in doing so.
Please. Does any of the council members have a question?
You mentioned three-tiered process of appeals. Could you explain that?
That's in the guidelines. The first process would be going to the city planner. The city planner can sign off on things without having to go before the historic district, you know, if it's something as simple as a building color or a simple awning or something along those lines. The next tier would be the actual commission itself. And then they would render their decision or suggestion for that change to the building. And the third tier, as specified in the design guidelines, it would be going to the city council.
And the last one?
Would be, and that's even, not even counting the actual legal suggestion that is in the actual ordinance itself.
Right now, the guidelines are in draft form.
They're in draft form.
So who will make the final decision and final approval on the guidelines?
The guidelines will be accepted by the commission. They don't suggest that the city council accepts them, because then it becomes an ordinance.
The concern, though, about the appeal process is that it's in the guidelines.
It isn't.
So if that could change, so there's nothing that guarantees that appeal process.
And if, I think the, and I'd have to speak on behalf of the commission, I think if that appeal process is wished to be put in the ordinance, I don't think that we'd have a problem with that.
I think that's the concern is, I thought that was the original.
The three-tiered, yeah, judicial review is in the original ordinance and three-tiered is to be put in the guidelines.
Well, did you say the guidelines are changing?
They have the flexibility to change.
Flexibility.
Because, and we need it that way, because there's always new materials that come out, you know, as far as building, there's new technologies that they're able to run, and there's certain circumstances that, you know, require some flexibility to figure. The ability to appeal, the system checks and balances to help complement and temper these sort of, I guess, conflicts and that.
And the appeal process is at no cost to the, with acceptance of judicial?
Yes, it's no cost to, and again, the certificate of appropriateness is no cost as well.
So how long can someone expect to wait if the first part of the process doesn't go through the planner and then they have to come to the historic commission?
The historic, the historic preservation commission, as I understand, they call me, so it is not to, they don't have to wait a whole other month. We, I think that the commission is really attempting to make this as pain as possible, but still with having effect that it needs to have according to the downtown.
but only to the district.
The district, right. The vice has a district wants the guidelines. My only concern is, I mean, I'd like to make sure there's something concrete about the appeal process, you know, rather than, you know, because if they change the guidelines and their only recourse may be judicial. So I'd like to make sure that there's something concrete in the ordinance that says that appeal process exists and can't be changed. That way it has to come back to the council before it changes.
That's fine. We can put in something, we can, you know, add to the ordinance as we, but again, we're not trying, we, you know, we're, they put that in the guidelines, you know, on purpose, you know, as to add that, we, you know, nobody's trying to exert any sort of street power.
I wasn't, I didn't say that at all.
No, I just, I just wanted to kind of really compliment the commission in their thoughtful process and us to be able to let everyone know that everything has been a conscious effort to accommodate as many different situations and many different thought processes as possible.
Was there any disadministration, this council, Brian, that the commission was asked to be right to this district?
Yes.
Three roll, the lines. Any other questions for Brian?
Jamie, what, excuse me, what you are saying is in the ordinance, you would like to see steps added as a tandem?
I'd like to see that three-tier appeal process.
Put in, into the ordinance?
Yeah. Do you have anything else to reply? Kathy brings up the fact that the original ordinance references the guidelines. There may be outside of this, it may be necessary to clean up some other aspects from the ordinance now. I can understand, I think, what Jamie's recommending is we're going to identify the territory now, let's contemporaneously with that also put in the appellate rights, so that everyone's protected. But understanding that we may have to have some language cleaned up, you know, after this, if the ordinance doesn't read well. Your appeal rights would still be in there, but is that, is that what you?
Kind of, I mean, in the very beginning of the original ordinance that was passed a few years back, every person gives the commission a right to, to the guidelines, to write the guidelines. And it's as a reference guide, basically, just like in the subdivision regulations, we refer to the design, construction design standards. We only reference it, we don't have it in the ordinance, because things are changing constantly in the state, especially with NDO, their walls are changing constantly, so we continuously are updating that book. We do it that way so we can update it at our leisure, not that we have to come back all the time here, and that's basically what the guidelines are. It's not nothing that, you know, someone's trying to pull a woman by anyone's eyes, which is a reference guide to go by. And there was some mention about some IC code. At the time, the original ordinance was adopted, that IC code was into effect. It was repealed in two thousand and seven, so therefore that IC code, I mentioned the judicial law, is that what you mentioned?
It did a judicial review.
Yes. Kind of is a brand card situation. It's still into effect, it was into effect the day two thousand and six when the ordinance was approved. So therefore, whatever judicial law is in effect now, that's what you have to go by. There is no reason to go back and change the ordinance just to update the IC code. You would do that if you totally revanped the ordinance.
So maybe the other ordinance is basically need to go back and add the comment about the appeal process?
Well, basically, it's, sorry, the original ordinance is referring to the guidelines already.
Well, but, right, but the guidelines, there's no, you know, I mean, the historic preservation, the commission can change the guidelines, and if they choose to take the appeal process out of there, then they could do that. We don't think they'd ever do it, right. But this way, they have to bring it back to the council to change the ordinance to have that done. This would ensure that that appeal process would be approved, and that's what I ask.
And I don't know if that, I don't know if that flies in the face of what the commission's trying to do, because it's like the subdivision improvement ordinance, where those may, those may change, they don't have to come before council, you know, the guidelines that you have, but what Jamie's saying, I think is fair.
No, I don't dispute, but I'm just saying the guidelines are there, or it's already mentioned that.
Right. We mentioned the guidelines, but we don't mention that specific part, so if they choose to take it out, there's still the guidelines without.
You'll definitely, you'll have the judicial review, because it's already part of the ordinance, but if you'd like to add in extra steps?
The extra steps that Brian talked about with the three-tier appeal process gives them an avenue where they don't have to go through a judicial review, and maybe they can get the matter solved, you know, without having to go that route. And that's why I think it's important, and maybe this ordinance isn't my ordinance to add it to, this is more the territory, but the other ordinance, I don't know, it might be the place to reference the guidelines, is this?
That's it.
Okay, so, okay, so maybe that's the one where you. Also, I don't know, that's what I was talking to Tim about, I don't know where you agree on this. Maybe you add section three here, that's the section.
Yeah, that's what you do.
I think you're okay. If your, if your concern is making sure that when you incorporate this territory, that you also incorporate rights of appeal, then go ahead and do it. I mean, I don't know that ideally that's how, how it'd be presented to you, we may have created a different ordinance, but.
That can pass, but as amended?
Yeah, you would have to make the motion to a second.
How much you want to, as amended?
I just.
Add that in?
You're creating more rights to the landowner as opposed to taking away rights, so I think it's, it's more appropriate to do that. If you were taking away a right, I guess I recommend that you did it so on a separate ordinance, but here you're adding, you're adding an extra layer of protection, of protection, if you will.
So you're going to amend the ordinance, you can, like, tonight? Can you do that?
And then you just need to change that, add that part in there. It's the second, I think it's the second page.
Right. You basically need section three to make it section four, and then you add section three.
Kathy, you just send the second page before you might have signed.
I think Kathy's going to make sure that we have the most, we're utilizing the most recent version of the guideline that's available to the public, and we'll read that into the record, if that's, if that's what you want.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, I think that's.
I just want to put it in the, so we're not taking anything away.
I mean, again, the commission purposely put that in the, in the guidelines, and I think, I guess for those of the commission, I don't think we have a problem with that whatsoever.
Well, while we're waiting on that, I mean, this to me was a perfect example of why we got three readings, because the first reading, I really had no feedback on this at all. The second reading, I had a couple of property owners call, so they were against it. By the third reading, I had a lot of property owners on Square Call, that were not, actually said they were added and opposed, and I talked to Brian about it. I mean, I don't think these are exactly the defendants that tell everybody what to do with their buildings, but I have to respect the wishes of property owners on the squares. I mean, I think I've changed my mind as well as supporting them. I don't know if anybody else has had a poll or anything on Square?
I walked around it, and, you know, I got to talk to the business owners, but I also asked the business owners, the majority of them weren't, or the business, the business owners, the majority of them, that didn't own the building, who the building owner was, and I think there was only one that I didn't, wouldn't name to contact. And the majority of them, like I said, like I gave at the last meeting, or the previous meeting before that, was twenty-three businesses, not the disowned, but twenty-three businesses out of that, twenty-one said no, one said yes, and the other was undecided. So that's what I'm basing my decision off of, because that's who we're here to represent. So we were here to represent the taxpayers, that's, that's the majority thing, but this is going to affect all the people on Downtown Square. So I don't know how you can logically say yes to something when you have the majority of the downtown saying no.
I mean, is it majority of downtown saying no?
I can't say it's majority unless there's one whole side of the square that is against it, I can say that.
I did personally talk to each one, but the ones that, excuse me, that I had, and I didn't bring that list with me tonight, I had almost thirty, I think I actually had thirty-one that were in favor of it.
I think that you said that at your first reading that you had to know, was that, we was back actually, spoke to some of the people and cleared up some of the, they failed some misconceptions about it as far as what, what it covered, what it didn't, what the purpose was, and some of them, I believe, had switched since you had spoken.
What was the misconception, Brian?
Misconception that we would actually go and tell them what they needed to change, some people that had that, and that's a common misconception that we've had to fight for people that we would have to, and that's not saying that you, you know, you were saying that by any means. There's also on what it covers, as far as saying, you know, if you want to do anything to your building, you have to get their permission first, but that's not the case. It's only on conspicuous changes, you can still have repairs, maintenance, as needed. There's also the notion that if your building gets burnt down or is incredibly damaged, you have to bring it back to what it originally was, and that's not the case either. There's also that you have to use the same materials, which is not the case. So a lot of them would believe in that situation that, to know that that's not a bad. The other thing that they actually agreed to, in some of the cases where I spoke to, is that they liked the idea of their next door neighbors having been held to the same standards that they were. They feel that levels the planning field in the downtown, particularly those who want to rest in their building, if they're going to invest thousands of dollars in their building, and the neighbor tends to, you know, is allowed to do whatever he or she wants with the building, thus affecting their property value, they were pleased to know that the, that that standard would keep that from happening. Equally, you know, also with many of the buildings downtown, you have shared walls, you have, you know, structurally shared, I don't know if I can better term, with the emphasis, you have shared structures in many cases. So even, probably more so than anywhere else in the entire city or county, downtown, neighbors are relying on other neighbors, being motion for property value and structural, and just a technical detail. And they were, they were pleased to look at it that way, some of them hadn't thought about it that, in our respect.
I never once said any of those. I know, and I want to clear the air, because I want to let people know what I said. I went in and I asked them if they wanted to become part of the historic preservation. That was the number one question. They said, what does that mean to us? All I said to them was, if you change anything to the facade of your building, the outside of your building, you will have to send a letter of appropriateness to the board, and then they will look it over and let you know if that's something they want to do or not. That's exactly what I said. I didn't say that during maintenance or anything else, you have to have that changed. So, and I think pretty much everybody that I talked to that day understood, and I told them that I wasn't there to give them the vote one way or the other, I was just asking the question.
And that's, and I, I was trying to, you know, always, I was meaning to get done, and, but going back around, there were some with some misconceptions and that, so I'm not saying it can't be, it could have been something, you know, just in the sheer fact that you want to be part of the historic preservation district, but they immediately said no, you know, they, they could have had that misconception too.
And I did let them know that there would be grant monies available to them.
There are grant monies, there's revolving loan funds, there's, you know, we There are grant monies, there are revolving loan funds, there's, you know, we've tried to establish as many incentives as possible to help people with that. It's not something that the commission takes lightly, that we take lightly. Obviously, it's a four-year, so it's something that we've thought over greatly. But again, it wasn't a comprehensive plan, and that's why we were going on with the community as asked for since 1970. I can go back through downtown plans, and I can show you the quotes and everything that we need to be done. There's something that's constantly been, been brought up by the community as seen as important. I respect the downtown building owners, I've spoken to a lot of them, I've spoken to many, I have to know Edna through the process very well. No, oh, we've, we've, we've talked to him, and I have to commend, commend this, because she has attended almost every one of our meetings, but we've listened to her. We have listened to her, and we've tried to take her, her, her points to the hardest as we have with that property ownership, even for, so, that's it. Not something that's been taken lightly, and something that we look forward to moving on from.
And Brian, I mean, anyone who wants to do something reconstruction or renovate their building, even if it's a newer style building, you still have to go to apply for building permit. And so you go through the same process. As far as counting votes, you know, I support each and every business that's on this square and is surrounding this square. We want them to be successful across the, you know, we don't want to hinder them in any way, shape, or form. I don't know, it shouldn't be the property owner that, if they're taking votes, decides what they want to do with their property, rather than the person who's leasing it.
I mean, because this is, this is geared towards property owners. It will, you know, have some, some effect on the businesses, but, you know, if you have sign owners and replace it as it is, anyway, so there's limitations to what, what can be done. But anything that's put on a building has to go through the property ownership.
Counsel, can you ask one first? I think since the first vote that we took, after the first reading, I think there's been a lot of mind changing, even with the, with the business owners, or the property owners, rather. I think it's probably closer now than what it was in the beginning. I think there's probably more people that have changed their mind to go the other direction, the other direction being against it. But I think that's because of the unknown.
I mean, why is that? I have, this is.
Well, to that point, as Brian has said, they've had over 40 meetings in the last four years, and I've attended a few of the meetings, and if you count on one hand how many people attend the meetings, so, you know.
You know, Daryl, how many were foreign at those meetings, did you ever ask?
How many were foreign?
Were foreign, yeah. You say?
No.
Okay.
You're, as a, you were usually the only one there as a business owner, so it was one to nothing.
Daryl, I was always here.
Non-commission.
One to one.
Okay.
But is that the counsel, another concern of the councils, if the business owners were concerned, why didn't they show up for all the meetings that were held?
Well, obviously, that's, you know, that's a question that I have, and I, I do see there's a lot of business owners here tonight.
There are business owners here tonight, and you don't ask them how they feel.
And I, when I had phone calls that brought that up, you know, in the meeting, they just said it. And I can understand that a lot of businesses just want to evolve, and anything's going to be controversial.
And don't you feel, Herb, a lot of it's just not really a change to their storefronts, but just that there's maybe a ordinance dictating to them what they need to do?
They see one. Yeah, I mean, I think if, if there's, yeah, if there's an ordinance over in your neighborhood that has an automatic, you'd probably be against it.
You know, you know, I see, no, I don't really care, because sometimes my house, I'm either going to tear it down and start out anew, or I'm going to repair it to the condition it's in.
Oh, tonight, you like to talk about that?
Absolutely.
So I have to live a certain life. I couldn't build a home there if my buildings weren't, could I?
Oh, no, you have to go through the zone. No, but it had nothing, it had nothing to do with, so I have to go through.
Through the zone, you'd have to go through the zone. Yes, okay, but before, it was said that you'd have to repair your building, I'm like, what?
No, it doesn't actually say, in the guidelines, there's nothing in there that says.
But it has to be three stories like hers is.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't even have, it doesn't have to be three stories.
But it has to be the height.
No, it has to be complementary to the, to the, the building heights around it.
But the last, last meeting, they said if one, one's up here, she can't be down here, and the other up here, they don't want to.
Yeah, and that's up to the, the commission, but I would say if you're trying to between, first of all, structurally dangerous, but if you're in between two, three-story buildings, and you want to put a one-story building in between there, there probably need to be something with, with your architect or whoever you have that would build at least some sort of barricade or something to bring it up close to the second, to make it look, a second level, not necessarily second level, but something that, that would be complementary to the two buildings. Now, as far as structurally, whether that would be staying in between those two, you know, three-story buildings, it would be, you know, up to the architect as well. But that's something, you know, that's another hypothetical that can come up, you know, and one that we, you know, we try to take into account, but one that I don't think necessarily should, should keep us from passing simply because of.
And, you know, we stay on, stay here on, I discuss this, and we may be here on, I discuss this. We will give the public an opportunity to speak, so.
See what, James?
Jamie.
What did, what did you?
Where we were just trying to talk about whether or not we could put something in the ordinance that would say anytime they change the guidelines, that maybe we'd come back to the council for, you know, a review, just kind of review, and nothing else, and then that would protect it. But that, I don't know, maybe we do that as part of the resolution or something, but it's, that wouldn't be part of the ordinance, he says, and it has to be.
Okay, but tonight, we're looking at two, basically two things. Changing the amount of tiers through the appeal process, and the other one is setting the districts.
Not, not changing the amount, just adding that to the ordinance, so that way, they can't, that way, the appeal process cannot be changed unless it comes back to the council. So it gives the, the, the building owners another kind of, another right, or another opportunity to, to make sure that, you know, they're not going to get, they're not going to be able to do it.
Okay, we need to move on, we need to move on, people have something to say.
So would the first thing then be to amend the ordinance? If you want to include that?
That's your motion, yeah, I mean, I do know, I make sure, Brian, you're talking about incorporating section two and three of the guidelines.
Yeah.
As, as you write the appeal.
Could it be a key phrase in the back being that any group of persons, or any person agreed by the commission decision may appeal to the city council, through, through the final line?
Well, the two and three, basically, it says that they're going to go through the city planner first, and then if there's, basically, if Kathy says it doesn't meet the guideline, or the city planner says that, then it would go to the historic commission, or they'd go to the commission, they would review it. And if they would deny it, then they can take it to the city council.
Yeah, I, I would think the commission has no, no problem whatsoever with that.
I don't know if that would all be section three, or maybe section three.
Oh, you're starting to up the ordinance.
Should, should we read that aloud?
Yeah, I would read it in a minute. If this will be in the motion. Moving to amend the ordinance to include these, these two.
All right, so. So am I going to make a motion that we amend ordinance 2010, or 2011 dash three to add a section between section two, or to drop section three to make it section four, and to add sections two and three of the current draft guidelines, which I'll read as the new section. Application of certificates of appropriateness, an application for a certificate of appropriateness shall be made to the Building Planning and Zoning Office, 314 West Washington Street, Greensburg. On forms provided by the HPC, pending HPC, will create forms. All applications shall be subject to the rules and the requirements established by the commission. Rules may include, but are not limited to filing deadlines and application requirements such as sketches, drawings, photographs, descriptions, or other information which the commission requires to make a decision, you know, given that. Next paragraph, approval or denial of certificates of appropriateness. The commission may approve or deny certificates of appropriateness for any actions covered by this title. If an application for a certificate of appropriateness is approved by the commission or is not acted on by the commission within 30 days after it is filed, or certificate of appropriateness shall be issued. The commission may grant an extension of the 30-day limit if the applicant agrees to it. The commission must report its findings and the reasons for its decision in a written form and supply the applicant with a copy of its report. A copy of this certificate of appropriateness must be submitted with the application for a building or demolition permit. No building or demolition permit shall be issued unless a copy of the certificate of appropriateness is provided by the applicant with the application. Any person agreed by the commission's decision may appeal to the city council, agreeing.
Does that just go to section three?
Section three.
Okay, and then the section three, you're moving to section four?
So basically, from that line down. This, this isn't passing the ordinance, this is just amending the ordinance to add that. So this, this would be to, to pass the ordinance, we're just adding that extra layer in. We still have to make a motion in the passing.
If this passed, how often do they end up at two, that we have to put up with?
Whenever it's deemed necessary by the property owners.
I'm sorry?
Whenever it's deemed necessary by the property owners and the council agrees.
Well, apparently, property owners aren't having too much luck in any of that.
But, Edna, this is to make it stronger for the property owners. This, right here, what they're looking at.
Okay, I still don't think we need the commission to tell us what we can do when we have to say. I just don't think.
And, and you have an opportunity to speak, I promise you. We'll have a second.
Second.
Any more discussion?
But I, I guess maybe I missed, maybe I misunderstood you two, Bill, right away. I, I wouldn't be opposed to hearing comments on the amendment we're making to the ordinance, if you have concerns about that. And, I mean, before we vote on the ordinance, I think they should have a right to speak too. I was just thinking about the amendment, so I don't, I'm not closed-minded to that.
No, that's not.
Okay, would anyone in the audience like to speak on the amendment to the ordinance by strengthening the protection of the property owners on the appeal process? Who wants to go in for us? Edna, what we had said was, anybody who wanted to discuss or comment on the amendment to the ordinance to reinforce, if you will, the appeal process for the property owners. Okay, that's okay, that's okay, Edna. Any more discussion? Hearing none, none, real call, real question.
Bill?
Yes.
Herb?
Yes.
Daryl?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Thank you. That amendment has passed. Can we, can we have one reading?
Yeah.
Move on to the actual district. This may take a while, so we'll have to discussion for the business owners or property owners. Anyone from the commission who'd like to speak? Anyone's welcome to speak right now. Mr. Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I will comment on the appeal, I didn't have any objection to the amendment, but if I understand the appeal process correctly, you're going to go to the commission, they're going to deny your certificate of appropriateness. You appeal to the city, you don't get satisfaction there, then you appeal back to the commission that just denied you.
No, no, you, you take it to the city planner first.
Yeah.
And if they deny it, then it goes to the commission. If they deny it, then you bring it to the council.
When do you get your judicial review?
That would be after the council, if the council denies it, then.
But you've got, you've got, going back to the county, you still have to go back to the council who has just, or to the commission who has just rejected your.
No, 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 when you want to renovate whatever, you go to Kathy, the planning commission, and she will look at what you're wanting to do, and she will approve it or disapprove it. And at that point, then you can appeal it to the, the commission.
That's what I'm saying.
Historic preservation commission, then if they deny the appeal, then it goes to the council.
And then the council denies it, it goes to court? Yes. So in my opinion, looking at those, that appeal process, it's going to be streamlined and require the property owner to go to court.
Right, bingo.
In my opinion, that's what, that's what the results are going to be, and it's going to be very costly for everybody.
And Frank, I really think you have to look at the, at the situation of what a property owner wants to do.
Well, I'm going to address those, those issues. It's my understanding tonight, Dale, the vote is to approve the district, and if that's the case, cut me out of it, because I think it's an ill-conceived plan. I think it's, you know, it's like if we came here and did a subdivision, we say, okay, we want everybody to build a pink house with red shutters in the subdivision. Then I could decide for myself whether or not I want to opt in or opt out, because I'm not going to buy a house in a subdivision that has nothing but pink houses. And that's the same thing we're looking at here, and I, and I disagree with it. I also oppose to the district for several reasons, because I find the guidelines that are going to, you know, the public's going to lose sight of the, of the guidelines. It's going to go to the commission, and that's, that's where the decisions will be made. But I find it to be very vague and arbitrary. This, this is almost like Big Brother personified, and the certificate of appropriateness is dangerous because it would, it could conceivably change as the members of the commission change. And I, I think the mayor appoints those commission members.
Yes, sir.
So we're going to be at the whim of a new administration, or we're going to be at the whim of a change in the commission members, who may or may not have been in tune with what the old commission has done. But to pass this, this district, to approve this district, is just one more step for making Greensburg just like the federal and state government, where they're doing an unfunded mandate. The guidelines are extremely flawed, as far as I'm concerned, because they are going to dictate, to a certain extent, what you can do or can't do with regard to your building, particularly if it's been damaged, either in whole or in part. And you're going to be in a situation where they're going to say, no, you have to do this and this, and there may not, you know, they may want you to make, just for the sake of argument, maybe make you have $100,000 with improvements, when in fact, your building burned to the ground and it only worth 50, or only insured for 50. And, you know, everybody says, well, there might be some grants available for that, but unless that is set in stone, the property owners have no recourse. And so I am opposed to the district, and I, and I do that, and I've talked with several members. By the way, nobody contacted me, other than I did talk, talk with Brian Robbins. He was nice enough to talk to me after the last meeting, but nobody contacted me. But everybody that I have talked to, and it hasn't been as many people as the council have talked to, but everybody that I have talked to is opposed to this concept. Thank you.
Before you leave, could I, uh, give a different scenario? If your building was demolished, can you want to rebuild? Would you rebuild it looking completely different than your neighbors?
I don't think I could replace my building. To be honest with you, I don't think I could replace, it would be cost prohibitive, number one, and I don't think I could rebuild it. And I know I don't have the insurance that would rebuild it to its original appearance.
On the front, on the storefront.
Okay.
But if you could, what would you do? And it was just as economically feasible to build it looking similar to what it does now?
I would do it. I would do it.
And I think that's what the commission is getting at, if it can be rebuilt, and nothing's going to cost the owner more money, but if they are going to rebuild, and maybe it's less costly to build it something similar to what you have in the past, not exactly, but something similar, if you look at it the same as what your neighbors did, you would probably do that.
Yes, but I would see any set of circumstances under which I would have the insurance money to rebuild it to look anywhere what it looks like today. My building's not in great shape, but I'm telling you that I don't, you know, I'm afraid that we're going to be at the mercy of Big Brother, and that is, the commission, an ever-changing commission, is going to be able to dictate to me whether they like my idea or don't like your idea. And they could say, nobody wants to do this, this, and this, and the sky's the limit on cost, and I have to appeal it to the court system. People can't afford that, people's taxes are expensive.
That's exactly why we put the appeal process in, you're right. If the commission changes, and they change the guidelines, it can still come back to the council, and those are your elected officials, so I think that that's the reason that was put in there, and that's why we wanted to ensure it as part of the ordinance, if this gets passed tonight. That way, that's in there, and, you know, there's hopefully some more accountability.
But it's going to come before a council, the leader of which is the mayor, who appointed all the commission members. It smacks of something.
But the mayor's not the one voting.
Oh, I understand, I understand.
You know, I don't know, it's set up by, it was set by a generic code or not, you know, I'm willing to let the council point the majority of them.
I didn't come here to address that.
Yeah, I know, I know, but Frank, really, and being fair, and I know you're a fair and honest person, if you had a business store someplace else on the square, and something happened, and you did want to renovate it, you know, improve it, you would probably stay somewhere in line with what your neighbors have, or what you already have.
Okay, then have the commission build in a grant system where I am guaranteed to have the money to do that thing.
No guarantee, yeah.
No guarantee.